At this time, I'll call the August 13th, 2020 meeting to order for the Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item we have is approval of the agenda. On the agenda, we have two additions. One of them, under the consent agenda, to add $499.60 for an abatement, abatements. And then the other is a voting delegate and an alternate for K-CAN. And I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the agenda as amended. Any question or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the August 6th meeting, also fund expenditures of $1,212,684.45. A wire payment, contract services of $2,500. And then also some abatements were added for totaling $499.60.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second it.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This time, we'll go on to commission comments. Craig, we'll start with you.
I have nothing today, Lynn.
Okay, Ron?
I'll just please, I'll be spending a little time in Marion County with the detention center people next week, so that'll be something interesting. That's all I have.
This past week, I attended Dixon County Economic Development Meeting, and the Board of Directors met, and there's some that zoom in, but also some of us meet at the office. They just kind of gave an update on some of the projects that are being worked on. And of course, often, some of those projects are confidential. And yet, there's many, many active files and lots of activity through there. Couple of the recent developments, and of course, most are aware of this by now, but you know, they helped a lot with Garfield, they're getting ready for kind of more of their rollout. They're at the school for housing, and they have people that have signed up for there. They also, we have a couple of new dentists that are coming, that are going to be part of Dr. Mike Robson's, what was his facility before? Husband and wife, and I think they're doing some remodeling and a few changes at the office in preparation for that. But it is amazing, the number of activities, the number of leads that they get, the inquiries that they get. And I'm very pleased that we have a very active economic development heart in our county. And when you look at the growth or just sustaining what you have, you've got to have some new things coming on, so. So it's good to hear that. If there are any public comments on any item that is not on the agenda, this would be the time to do that.
Lynn, I forgot to say, I will be attending the annual meeting tomorrow night at from 5:30 until 7:00. So I don't know if you're going or not.
Yes, I plan to attend, so.
Okay, so we'll give you that on the.
Oh, where is it at?
Garfield.
Garfield.
Yeah.
What meeting?
Annual EDC.
EDC, okay.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
5:30?
Yes.
5:30, okay, thanks.
Okay, we do not have any committee reports, we don't have any proclamations. It is 11:05. At this time, we're going to have a public hearing for the 2021 Dixon County Budget. And we'll have some remarks from our finance director, Janelle, at this time. And so, this is part of the hearing, and then when she finishes, we can have questions or comments from the commission, but also, there'll be opportunity for public comments. So at this time, I would open the public hearing for our 2021 Dixon County Budget.
So, as you know, fiscal year 2021 is upon us for budget time. And the purpose of the budget is the financial plan for the year. So, our budget process starts in March, and it has to be completed by August 25th by statute. It has to be certified to our county court by then. We meet with the department managers and review the personnel needs, our capital projects and equipment, and our operating expenses for each department. Obviously, that takes several months. And the 2021 budget is $23,669,666. So, we'll go to the next one. So, kind of highlight some things that we've had, you know, this past year, just different meetings that the commission has had. We wanted to show that. So, our tax dollars that we have, what does the tax dollars pay for, for the county? County's responsible for 295,000, 295 bridges, and highway, the highway crew replaced 19 of those bridges in 2019. We completed asphalt maintenance of 27 miles and overlaid 20 miles of road. The environmental services inspected 82 wastewater systems. We had 2,287 EMS calls that were responded to, and 2,890 immunizations were given by the health department. Zoning issued 74 building permits this past year. Dispatch handled over 20, almost 27,000 calls for police firing EMS in our cities and on the county. Sheriff worked 422 accidents, we had 1,003 persons who were booked into the jail. District Court filed over almost 3,000 cases, and county attorney filing 359 criminal cases during that time. According to our county court, we've got 12,851 registered voters in the county, and our treasurer manages funds for 91 different taxing units in the county. This is just a small list of the things that the county provides, or the services that are provided there. So what does this mean? What is the property tax value? The 55.925 mils are only a portion of the citizens' tax bill. Adware and taxes are collected, and it's based on the value of the property, which is set by the market. And that's used for roads, law enforcement, medical emergency services, elections, courts, fire protection, public schools, and many other things. So when you break it down, if you go to the next one. So, for more than 20 county services, the county's portion is $53.60 a month. When you take, this is the formula that you use on appraised value, a home of $100,000. The assessed value, or the market value, the assessment ratio is 11.5%. And you can see how the formula works there. That's on a residential home. The racial assessment for commercial is 25%, for real property is 12%, ag use is 30%, and all others is 30%. So, there's a, there's a lot of value for the 6, for the $643.11 you get annually for county services. If you go to the next slide. Now, our revenues are down slightly from the previous year. We've seen a reduction, particularly in EMS and health department revenues. John told us earlier that they were down at least 20% earlier this year. It's come up slightly, but we're still down 14.4% from last year. And while our sales tax numbers have been higher than the previous year, we did reduce our estimates for '20 and '21 when we made this budget. Then, certain times, we just, we wanted to make sure that we were cautious in our estimates, and that's why the reduction there. And if we look at our, if we look at our expenses on the next slide. Again, the goal when we started out with this was to keep our budget the same, our levy the same. And we actually reduced it slightly. The elected officials and the department managers were all asked to reduce their budgets by 10% this year and for next year. We also asked our outside organizations to do the same. And the overall budget is less by $47,000 from the 2020 budget. Part of the reductions came from training that was canceled or rescheduled, from face-to-face to online training. And unfortunately, though, we're still seeing increases for expenses. Rock, sand, and salt, asphalt, 20% increase in the highway department. Corner cost, 100% increase. Software and license costs, 30% increase. Insurance for our equipment and property, a 23% increase. Parts and supplies for vehicle equipment and repair, a 12% increase. Road maintenance for our contract for our grading, a 10% increase. And we're still operating under the property tax lid at 1.8 CPI. So that's all the statute would allow us to increase our budget by. Our next slide just breaks it out by function. 31% of our monies go to public safety. That includes 911, sheriff, jail, EMS, the county attorney, district court, emergency management, and juvenile detention. Our special funds at 36% are made up of our highway, road, and bridge, highway sale, special revenue fund, highway sales tax, bond and interest, capital projects, and our sewer districts. The administration fund at 16% is the commissioners, our county counselor, our county administrator, IT and GIS, HR and payroll, custodial and budget. The public service funds consist of the coroner, noxious weed, our health department, and transfer stations, and that's at 9%. Taxation, sorry, bar, 6% for county clerk, election, treasurer, appraiser, zoning and registered deeds. And then our appropriations in this budget make up 2%. And that's going to be the conservation district, the Flint Hills Task Force on Aging, Central Kansas Free Fair, Tri-County Fair, Historical Society, Central Kansas Mental Health, OCCK, and the Dickinson County Economic Development Corporation. This is a very brief overview of our budget, and do you have any questions for me?
I think it's helpful that you point out to the process, not only based on what we've done in previous years, but also having department heads and elected officials start examining their budgets back in March, and trying to anticipate what things are going to look like quite a few months out. So, I appreciate the work that's done throughout the county in preparation of the budget, but also you as collecting the information and processing it. Are there comments or questions from the commission?
I'd like to comment on the county staff, all of them, from leadership down. I think the people have done a wonderful, wonderful job this last year. Not only do they do their job, but they save money for the county, so they're a great asset to this community. And it reflects in the percentage of what goes out for waste. These folks are really, they're doing way beyond what they're expected to do. They're saving the county money, they're working safe, and they're dependable people, so we've got a good staff.
Appreciate it.
Part of this also is public comments. Would there be anyone that would want to make comments? And if so, just step to the podium, give your name and address, and whatever comment you have or question. We'd receive any comments at this time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Diane Shaw, I'm the treasurer of the Dixon County Historical Society, and I want to thank you for your support for our organization. I understand you have to cut, you asked for, we dreamed for the stars, we didn't quite get them. But thank you very much for what you've given us and your support.
Thank you.
Diane Miller, 1601 Jayhawk, Abilene. I, I wanted to express a couple of concerns. And before I start, I want you to know that I am volunteering at the extension office. I helped with the VIDA program last year, and I plan on doing it again this coming year. I'm disappointed that what the community was told when the merger was proposed hasn't happened. And I looked at the budget documents that they had, they did, they had data adjusted for a rental that was not accounted for. But the mill levy is still considerably higher than what we were told it would be, and the savings that we were told was going to happen aren't there. Lynn mentioned about the reduction from K-State, I don't know if they knew about that before, beforehand. It was hard to follow because they didn't, they did a virtual budget hearing. And that's problematic for a lot of, for a lot of reasons. Then I wanted to know if, in the county's budget, it's a little bit misleading to say that your budget is flat when you didn't account for that over $300,000 transfer that you did not make this year. And was that deducted before you considered the 1.8 increase?
Yes, but we had other increases that came up with the road and bridge departments. And the road and bridge departments, their levy increased from 14.221 mils to 15.138 mils. So that, that took a, a big chunk of that to $322,000 that was transferred to the extension council. So we've seen increasing costs in the highway.
But that's normally something that the county includes in their budget. My question is, when you figured the total 1.8% increase that's allowed by law, did you, did you take that on the total budget that was published last year?
It, that is a factor in that, yes, in the formulas that the state gives us, in the, in the worksheets. But it also includes what our carry, what we're anticipating our carryover to be, and what we're anticipating our revenues to be for '21 and for our expenses.
So that was not deducted before you, that 322,000 was not deducted before you took 1.8%? I, I feel like the mill levy is misleading. I never like to talk mill levy because it's misleading. It doesn't talk about the dollars. And that's why the transparency legislation was enacted, because it talks about dollars, and it talks about increases in keeping the budget sustainable. And I'm also concerned about the economy for our local economy. The restaurants can't open at full capacity. A lot of shops downtown, there's, there's very little foot traffic. We don't have any tourist traffic, per se, because the Eisenhower is, or it's down, because the Eisenhower Center is not open. That's all impacted. And when I, when I opened the paper now twice this month and saw two full pages of delinquent property tax listings, that was rather shocking, because people are not able to pay those bills. And a lot of people, besides the public sector, are not going to have the revenue that they, that they had the last year. And an increase in taxes is going to impact a lot of people in a lot of negative ways. So that's my comments, I appreciate the time that you allowed me.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do agree with you that sometimes the mill levy as a measuring stick is, can be interpreted different ways. I don't think it's meant to mislead, but it, as the valuation changes and such. And, and the fact that, you know, we were trying to lower the mill levy, which, which we did. But I understand your concern, because we did have that approximate 300,000 carved out of the budget beforehand. And I, I think the, correct me or add to it, but I believe the asphalt prices probably took a little bit more of a jump than typically what they do.
Correct.
As far as road and bridge.
Correct.
And, and maintaining the infrastructure, you know, also is kind of an indirect economic development, because you always used to have the farmer-to-market type traffic, but also the accessibility of people to get around, whether it's FedEx or UPS making deliveries, and people coming to grocery stores and so on. So, so we have been pretty aggressive. And our sales tax revenues are up slightly, which we kind of anticipated more of a dip.
Exactly.
And, but I, Diane, I think you raise a good point about the concern economically of the whole community, because, you know, it is, it is challenging, to say the least. And some sectors have hit a little harder than others, so.
When you add the two mill levies together for the extension in the county, which was included in the county's mill levy last year, it is your 55 point plus 1.7 something. I know they reduced the published budget a little bit, but I don't know what the number was. So that's not a decrease, and that's not a flat.
Okay.
Diane, I'd like to add a little bit too. I'm kind of new here, so you're going to have to bear with me if you will, please. I think we're all very conscientious about money, you know, in our own personal lives, with the times we're going through. But sitting here on the commission, I'm afraid you're going to hate me after I tell you this, but I, I'm, you know, these guys saying, "We need to spend money, we need to do this, we need to do that." They're holding me down, because I can't believe they're doing what they're doing here and keeping everything going while they're doing. And I'm thinking, my goodness, you folks are doing, believe me, the numbers look like one thing, they, they look, oh my gosh, oh my gosh. But in reality, when you put the whole picture together, you wonder how they can even operate? Keep her, keep us safe, keep our roads going, and so on and so forth. It's just, it's a puzzle, believe me. And our thoughts and hearts are, we're not going to get anybody or hurt anybody financially. We're in this together, we're in all of it, we're in an economic time that's tough. But the commissioner, speaking for them and myself, that we're at awe, I'll tell you. It's just, it's a tough deal. The extension service thing presented, it's certainly a way to us, represented, as you're talking about the mill levying things. They've been trying to work with that for many, many years, and trying to put that together to bottom line, save resources, utilize the people they have, and make things better for a couple counties. And so you, you shoot the best you can and do the best you can with the resources you have, and that's what we came up with. So, I'm very saddened that it's turned out like this. I don't know what the dollar, end up in dollar amount will affect each person, but I believe it's not going to, it's going to be minimal when you figure it out. And tell me later if I'm wrong, but we'll see what happens.
Are there any other comments part of the public hearing? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed. This is an action item that we, we can keep the amounts the same as what was published, or we can alter it if it's to lower it, but otherwise, we cannot increase it, is my understanding.
Correct.
Are there, is there a motion regarding the budget, or any questions that anyone would want to bring up at this time? I do see that it's down here further to adopt the county budget, but I think we could go ahead and do that at this time.
I move that we adopt the county budget for this year.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And there are some papers to sign in regards to this. And we got one of the others from previous that still needs a signature. Okay, we'll go on to the reports of our county officers. Brad?
Okay, well, you heard most of this report from Martin in the department head meeting, but we're pleased to let everybody know that our overlay projects for the summer are done. And I would very proudly say, if you've had the opportunity to drive on 1400 Avenue or on Duke Road between I-70 and 1400 Avenue, you would see that our guys did an outstanding job on that overlay. The paint stripper was in this past week and got all, all the new paint that we've done, including the Mastic Seal and some other roads, a total of 80 mile stripe, and it looks really good. So, we're very blessed to have gotten that good quality job, and we got it done without any injuries or with any accidents, and that's always a bonus as well. And so, now the guys will move forward to some other smaller projects here the rest of the fall. So, to that end, I did receive a card earlier this week from Julie Sprinkle, and I'll pass it on to you, a very nice thank you card. And she expresses her appreciation for the, the work the guys did on Duke Road, and how professional they were. And she had some conversations with Mark and Bono out there and some different things. I thought that they were very pleasant and professional, and that means a lot coming from our citizens, so. You know, we talked about the budget and the increase. You know, I think it's extremely valuable to people to be able to drive on those good roads. And I think, you know, say we take stuff like that for granted, is, is an understatement. We certainly hear, and I heard comments, and I expressed during our session, about some portions of the state highway earlier this week that were, to the citizens', description terrible. And, but we don't hear complaints about our county roads, that's because Martin and the guys keep them in excellent shape. That doesn't come at a low cost. It comes at a cost, and like Lynn mentioned, that the price of asphalt is going up. And I would, I would proffer that the savings for the $322,000 in the extension budget came in not being an increase on our requested budget for 2021, because otherwise, we would have had a, another mil and a quarter. Instead of being 55 mils or whatever it is, it would have been 56 and a quarter. And so I think there is a decrease in our budget, so. And it, and where it's at, with the increases in costs from the road and bridge expenses alone is, was, was a big undertaking, so. But with that said, they will be going over next week and helping Solomon do some chip seal on some streets over there, and then possibly Manchester, and as we always do every year, we help out the cities, but we provide those city, those services of whatever the cost is to us. We do not charge them for labor, we just charge them for materials. And, and so it helps them out to get a product at lesser cost, and they'll make their cities safer and better, better communities, so. The jail meeting, we had a jail meeting, a two-week meeting on Monday. In your package, I've got a little update sheet there of the stuff that we went through. But probably the biggest milestone is that they were planning and did get the jail, the remainder of the jail floor poured Tuesday. And that includes the booking area and the port out to the Sallyport. And as we speak outside, they're working on preparing the Sallyport, they're going to pour that either tomorrow or Monday. They're installing security mash up above in the jail, and the sprinkler system is being installed. And then the painters are supposed to be here on the 24th, start painting inside the jail area, get some of that stuff done. Jail windows are scheduled to be installed this week or next week, and things are just progressing pretty well. So, we are a little behind on our schedule, and in your package, I also have, give you a copy of the current schedule as of Monday. It shows a completion date as of the way things are right now, around Thanksgiving, so it's a little bit later than the first or second week of November, like we planned. That's a moving target. If things go well, we could pull back in within that, or we could go a little farther if we have any hiccups. It just depends, but they, they adjust that every couple of weeks, try to keep us on track as much as we can, so. I don't know that it's going to be problematic for us, you know, originally, back when we were looking at the window that we could get sterile haul, they had other things that were leased and, and issues that we were trying to fit into that area to minimize their loss. Well, at this point, that's not a problem, because they have any revenue coming off of it with everything being closed. And I think, you know, with the election going on, you know, if we are a week or two later than the original, that'd give Barbara a chance to breathe a little bit between the general electric and, and so, give us time to get things installed out there, but I think we're, we're doing just fine on that front, so. Dr. Holmes and John will be going around, as he said, doing jail, or jail, school inspections. Some people might think of doing like jail. School inspections on Monday and Tuesday, working with the school districts. They will go in and, and put a visual inspection on every school building. And they have been communicating with the superintendents and helping them make their plan for reoccupying their buildings and doing it in a safe manner. And this will just give an extra set of eyes on their facility. And this will just give an extra set of eyes on their facilities to give them any suggestions and, and ideas on things that could be done differently or better, or make sure that they've already done, they're already doing the best of the ability that can be done, so. Next Thursday morning, if you're available or willing, we'll start at nine. Dr. Holmes, along with his patient load, he can come down at nine o'clock and meet with you. For some reason, I, it sure, and it still seems to me, Craig called it to my attention, seems like we'd had our board of health meeting this year. And I went back and looked at the minutes, and it was in February of 19 instead of 20. And I guess it just unfathomable, it, it been that long because it seemed like it was just a few months ago. But so we, we need to have our 2020 board of health meeting. And I think that'd be a good opportunity to get an update on everything that's going on with the COVID stuff from John and Brian. So if you guys can start the meeting just a little bit early next Thursday at nine o'clock, we could do that then. And he, he needs to be back up to the hospital by nine thirty or ten. But he thought he could fit that in if that works okay for you.
Okay.
And then you get a copy of the Sparks funding. We talked about that, just giving you an update on the funding that's going out to the other jurisdictions to kind of keep you that, keep that loop clear for you. And we went through that in the work session. But we continue to monitor the Sparks webinars, and we're waiting on some responses back from them in regards to the federal guidance on some of our expenditures. We're waiting on the approval for our direct date. Once we get that, we'll be able to expend those funds as well, so.
Question on that, is how much is left of the Sparks money? I'm looking at just the, the total we've spent so far is almost $2 million?
The 1.977, correct. And then the direct date is 1.7.
Okay, then that's what we haven't spent, the 1.7.
That's what we have not spent.
Okay, that's why I find.
And that's because we haven't received approval.
Right, I was just making sure that I was interpreting here right.
Yep.
Some money on hand is some 1.7.
Yeah, okay.
And we hope to spend every dime, unless we can, so. In the webinar yesterday, they were, Bruce Clidney from KFC was, was kind of, I, I say with all due respect, drinking some of the water, a little Kool-Aid, but they were asking for all of us to report how much money we thought we were not going to be able to use back, to give back to the state. And I, you know, jokingly told you, now, I said, put a big fat zero in there because we don't plan on giving the state back anything if we can find a way to spend it on the COVID expense we're going to. That seems to have been the mindset all along, is give you this money, give you a small window to use it, make the perimeter's views so great that you can't use it, and here's the ways we can use it at the state level when you give it back to us.
See, what you should have done is asked, how much more can we give?
Yeah, so.
True.
It's a little frustrating, except for those things of listening to the different state agencies tell you, well, if you give it back, this is how we'd like to spend it. And so the intent wasn't to, to help us from the beginning. From the federal level, yes. From the state level, not so much, so. But at any end, we did, I did, after last week's meeting and, and after Kathy's article in the paper yesterday, I received a couple of calls from citizens telling me, I responded back to your email, and he, he copied right back and thanked me for the response and said that he had, just so we know, he had had people reach out to him to get some rights signed for the wind farm. And I got another call yesterday from a lady that owns property in the south end of the county and said she had been visited by people representing trade winds wanting to get some, some occupancy rights purchased in advance, or however they worded that, I don't know. But apparently, there's, there's some things that it works with the property owners. We have not received a condition release permit request or anything that Tim has not heard from anybody, so. Like we said last week, they, they knew more about it than we do. So apparently, there's some things going on with what they call the Hope Ridge Wind Farm that may be happening, so. That's all I've got.
Hey, thank you. Doug?
After the last tax sale, we ordered the title companies to prepare the documents we need for the tax reports for the next one. And we finished the deeds from the tax sale, delivered those to the sheriff. They were executed by the sheriff, delivered to the clerk of the court, to the register of deeds. And I'll pick those up hopefully when we finish this meeting here, they'll be available. And we'll mail those out. And we have the, the court, of course, approved the tax sale. And we will have a hearing coming up for those that, properties that brought excess funds and that they will be refunded. And we'll have that one concluded. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. We have, we'll go ahead and move on to notices and communications. And we did receive from the Kansas Policy Institute, and they have a information that they've given out for the size of municipalities and counties in parallel to the economic growth. And then I was wondering, Brad, and this is from our department head meeting that we had earlier today, and we heard from the various departments. When we get ready to make the move and the driver's license portion will not be able to move or they can't transfer the equipment and so on, I, I wonder if we need to alert the public because, and probably Leah's the one for clarification, but I, I believe a person doesn't have to wait to get your new license necessarily. I mean, if you were scheduled, if it hasn't come up yet, that it expires, you could come in early still and do that?
There's a timeframe. I forget how many months it is, but, because I asked when I had to renew mine a while back. And you can't do it, it's like six months or so ahead of time. You can, but any more than six months ahead or some number like that, you can't renew it any sooner than that. But there is, there is a window, you know, you can come in and do it early, so.
I, I think just as far as public service, because otherwise you're going to have to drive to another county to get that done. And we really have a great convenience here that, that often we take for granted. But, but maybe you could either have Leah come in or, or we can make a, have a report on what that timeframe is, just to alert the public, just to get them.
Put it on the website.
A few weeks head, heads up.
Yeah, I'll take it over to the radio with Lynn.
Yeah.
Yeah, start talking about it, so, yeah, we can do that.
Okay, any other notices and communications?
Nothing on the computer, Lynn.
Okay. We did not have any resolutions. The only other item we had that we added to the budget is to consider appointing a vote, appointing a voting delegate and alternate for the K-Camp annual meeting. And that's going to be virtually done because we will not have our annual meeting for the county, KAC or Kansas Association of Counties. We do not have that this year or this fall. So the voting delegate has to be an elected official or the alternate?
I'll come in and do it, Lynn. That's Wednesday, isn't it, the 14th?
Wednesday, October 14.
Yeah.
And for the alternate?
I'll do the alternate.
So we have the motion, or I'll make that into a motion then, that Craig will be our voting delegate. Chamberlain, the alternate, Ron Roller, any other discussion?
Yeah, I'll let you know when they, you know, when they zoom, the, the treats they have. I'll, I'll go through, pick those out.
Oh, yeah, you always get a lot of hands and sign up for door prices and, you know.
I don't know if I'd zoom or not, but I'm going to try it.
Okay, well, I, okay, well, thank you for pointing that out. So that's why you sign up every year.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
I'm going to lose my place.
Did we get a second to the motion?
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Okay, we have the motion and the second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries?
I move we adjourn.
I'll second that. We have the motion and the second to adjourn, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries or adjourn?